Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Go ahead and consider our motion to approve our agenda this morning.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda and consider our motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sir, second.
Second.
Thanks. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the audience want to come up and address the board? Please come up and you'll be limited to five minutes. Please just state your name and address.
Paul Paulson. I live at 1309 West Murphy Drive in Sioux Falls. I want to talk about the planning and zoning met a month ago, and I was at that meeting for the primordial feedlot, spoke against it, and during in the public comments where we could speak, I spoke against it, and afterwards, why, when the board is talking about this, one of the commissioners went into quite a long rhetoric about, nobody was there to speak against that permit for that primordial application, and which was wrong because I was there, and I did speak against it. And then on top of that, Eric Scott is a township board member from Hyden Township where this feedlot is, I would have thought he should have been rescused himself from that discussion and any of these discussion on that feedlot. And also, towards the end of the meeting, Mr. Scott made a pointed remark looking directly at me, so I know he was speaking to me, about a pile of manure that's on my farm that I represent, it's Paulson Farm. Our renter is a cattle feeder, so I'm not against cattle feeding. My wife has land that's a cattle feeder that farms that also. But his statement was that that pile of manure out there in the fall waiting to be spread after the crop was out was related to the odor that we have down at, go down at our church. And this was a pile of dry manure, which I took offense at that because I didn't think that was very professional on his part to say anything like that. So, two things, I think he should have been rescused himself, he should have rescued himself from that discussion on that feedlot, being he's a township board member. And also, and I think there should be apology made for that statement that he made towards me. And being that was made, I think the county commissioners should remove him from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Harold, I know you wanted to speak.
Yeah, just briefly to bring to your attention a couple of things coming up. The first one being the towns and township meeting, which I think Terry Sletton should have notified you about. Working in conjunction with Steve Holmberg, who is the county chairman for the towns and townships, we moved it to the 4H building, thinking we'd have more room. We've been in some Pizza Ranch places a couple of times, and you hardly have room to take a deep breath, so we should have plenty of room there. We'll have representation from our state office in Pierre, talking about the unique identity number that is going to replace everybody's DUNES number, which they have to have to get federal funding through FEMA or any other thing. So this unique identification number is something new, and there's been some confusion about it, and we'll try and get that straightened out there when everybody has a chance to be there. The second thing would be the flyer I put in place in front of you about our severe weather training that we're able to do up in Sioux Falls, again, at the Washington Pavilion. We've had a couple of years where we haven't been able to do that because of COVID, of course. Now, the Weather Service is able to go out in public again, and I'm spreading these out to all the fire departments and all first responders in the county, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Harold, what day was the meeting out at the 4H grounds?
That'll be April 5th.
Thank you.
And we're serving a catered meal at 6 o'clock, being as we're away from Pizza Ranch, so. I told Steve I'd pay for part of that meal, so we're going to plan on about 60 people for that meal, so. If we have food left over, we all get to take some home.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? If not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I know that last, excuse me, two weeks ago, and now again this week, the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, Jesse von Kord, of course, heads up, is I guess organizing against some meetings in regard to the Lincoln County Wastewater Regional Pipeline and Study. Again, this involves some of the communities of Lenox, Worthing, and possibly Canton as well. And I know one of the things, obviously, if this is even going to possibly happen, we have to come up with feasibility and costs and so on. And again, in order to do that, we have to take a look at possible engineering studies on this, which at this time is of no cost. But again, this is something that has been in the works for a while. Again, we'll keep you posted. There's nothing that has been decided yet at this particular time, other than that we are going to take a look at possible three engineering studies that have been proposed, and I hope that, you know, I can keep you informed here in the near future as far as what direction we'd be, and obviously, this can't happen without a lot of, I would say, grant money and other forms of income to these metropolitan areas and to our county, so that's all.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
We had our, you were there, and Commissioner Gibbon, we had our district meeting in Vermillion, and those are always interesting because the auditor, Register of Deeds, and Treasurer, and and the equalization people get together and commiserate on the challenges that they face. So we had a good discussion. One of the things, Madam Chair, that while it hasn't hit our plate yet, which is out there, is this pipeline, CO2 pipeline, that is going to try to follow the Dakota Access. And if you haven't, we've, the Minnehaha County had a group that appeared there, and they were formulating a letter of, to, I think, oppose or have some real concerns about that. And I would ask, Madam Chair, if you would, if you could contact them, because it may be something that the two counties together could issue a joint letter of of concerns about the safety of what this line represents. I talked with the PUC, Kristy Fegan, who has recused herself because she has land that is affected by the Dakota Access Pipeline, and she recused herself, so she's done the same thing for this other pipeline, which is a private one. And I talked with her about some of the concerns that they have, or she has, about its safety and other issues. The other thing that is, we should be cognizant of, is this eminent domain given to a private party. And I have real concerns about a private company being able to use eminent domain. So these are some of the things that we need to vet. So if you had an opportunity to talk with whoever the current chair is, I think it's Cindy Heiburger, about where they are, and maybe the two counties could collaborate and look at that from a better standpoint. And I think it, it shows that two counties are working together, but two counties have great concerns. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Any other commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair, tonight at 5:30 at Liberty Elementary is the open house for the Harrisburg Master Transportation Plan. That's going to be hosted by the Harrisburg City Council, and I'll be in attendance there. I encourage others who are interested in looking at Harrisburg's transportation needs over the next decade to attend if they're so interested. And then the second thing I wanted to touch on is similar to Commissioner Schmidt's comments. Tomorrow night at 5:30 at the Ram Cota Hotel in Sioux Falls, there is a Public Utilities Commission meeting where they're going to hold a open, I don't know if you want to call it a hearing, but people are going to be allowed to attend and give comments and public input on this CO2 pipeline. And I think I'm going to attend. It could be very interesting to try to hear all of the facts so that we don't prejudge this and assume one way or another whether there's a safety issue or not. I guess I'd like to hear all the facts on it, so. From both sides, and, or all sides. And so I encourage the public and commissioners here and others to attend if they're interested in wanting to hear more about this. That's 5:30 tomorrow night at the Ram Cota Hotel. Thank you.
Commissioner Aaron's, the, at the Harrisburg Master Transportation Plan, you said that was at 5 o'clock, and where was that being presented?
That's at 5:30, and it's at Liberty Elementary.
Sure.
And that's the usual location where the city council meets.
All right. Thank you for that. Anyone else have a report they'd like to make? If not, we'll move on to regular business. Item one on our agenda. It's a motion to approve the survey of area for sale from area to transfer to the city of T to enhance water retention along Nine Mile Creek. Who's handling that?
I'll take that, Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
So as directed, we worked with IMAG to do a evaluation of what is a logical separation of the parcel into two parts, one being the more developable property and the area that would be more advantageous for protection long-term for water holding capacity on Nine Mile Creek, to protect the in and outflows on that creek, which has been very sensitive and a topic for many, many years, especially at the semi-annual drainage board meetings. So what you're seeing in your file is the line that has been determined as the logical location for that split, and I'd recommend approval for that, and with that, I'll give that motion.
Thank you. Sir, second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I've got a couple of questions, Madam Chair, for Commissioner Poppins.
Absolutely.
So if I understand correctly, we're going to conduct a survey here. Is that, I understand that to be the first part of your motion, right?
No, the survey has been done through IMAG and with Marcus who, from NAI, to, for those two individuals and myself to work as to what made a logical split for marketing the most advantageous parcel, partial of that property. And that survey work has been done. Now it's to prove that's, that line that has been determined.
There's, there is a letter in your share file that explains it. It looks like one parcel's 44.33 acres on the split out, and the list price, according to the NAI's math, was $60,000 an acre. So about over 2.6 million to sell that.
Yeah, the portion today is just to create the two different parcels.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, Commissioner Poppins, because I noticed here in the motion, or at least what's on the agenda, it said for sale from area to transfer to the city of T. I just wanted to make sure that what we're doing here today is just approving.
This is just approving, this is just proving the separation of the two parcels.
Correct. That's what I was getting at.
Yep.
Yeah, and I did notice the letter in here, and I noticed that there was a price attached to it, but I guess I didn't want to say anything in public in case that would be to the disadvantage of our negotiating with any possible entities, but apparently it's a public letter now.
It's a, that is public, and that's, it is, because it's in our agendas.
It's not. It's in a confidential document.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I didn't feel it was appropriate for us to say the dollar amount out loud, because we may lose our negotiating advantage then.
Yeah, the next item is what's actually going to bring that out, so.
Okay.
I don't think we've exposed anything that isn't going to be exposed, just we're going to move, so, but my motion is simply to separate the two parcels.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to item two on our agenda. Commissioner Poppins, you want to address that one?
So again, this is the, moving forward with trying to sell the portion that we have just identified. We had hired NAI Marcus to be a representative on that portion. He has shared with you what his recommended listing or asking price for that property, which I will say, reiterate, is $60,000 per acre basis for the 44 point whatever acres. I would encourage us to move forward on that, just for conversation. The lower, the other portion, 90 some acres, will be, the intent is to try to work with the municipality of T yet, and having them acquire that for the preservation of water retention, detention, improvement for the future with the municipality of T. But that is not part of the motion today. So this is strictly to move forward with the marketing of the 44 acres.
I'll second your motion, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Madam Chair, if, so everyone's okay, this is the asking price, will be 60,000 that he will market it at. Everyone's clear on that? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item three on our agenda.
Morning.
Good morning.
First one here is to prove to purchase some supplies off the Yankton County bid. We're purchasing crack sealant.
I would so move. Second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Is that, is the bid, is that up, down from what it normally was? I mean, are we reflecting anything with the fuel and all that stuff?
I haven't found one thing that's consistent or gone down. Everything has gone up, and a lot of it immensely. It's ugly.
Yeah.
The next thing I have for you is approve the chair to execute and sign the big grant agreement with the South Dakota DOT for the Lake Alvin structure.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. A quick question, Madam Chair, if I could?
Sure.
How soon will we have numbers, do you think, for what that project might cost, actually, because we got to go through the bids?
Yeah, so, yeah, once we start going through the processes, when we'll have the final.
Yeah, how many months are we looking at, do you think? Six months?
I would imagine possibly, yeah, probably sooner than that.
Sooner than that?
I would, I would imagine.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda. Wendy, do you want to come up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm working on getting a, applying for a workforce grant through the state of South Dakota. The grant would be for a swine education facility, which would be our swine housing building. It would be a 40 by 100 pool-style barn it would be. So people who are foragers or have a fae kids that want to have pigs but don't have a place to house them could be there during the summer months, would be during that time, and we would use that during achievement days then for the animal housing for the pigs. What I'm looking for is just on that grant application, we need to have the Tiffany signature on that to say that we can apply for this grant because it's going to be on county property, so.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Can I speak to you afterwards about that?
Do you have, do you have the application?
I have the part where you have to sign.
Okay, do you want?
Should I give it to Sean right now?
That's fine. You can give it to Sean, or I can sign it now. Whatever works.
What time does this thing kick off tonight? Or Saturday, or should say.
Although Commissioner Schmidt is asking about our fundraiser that the foundation is doing, so that's this Saturday at 5:30 at the 4H building, so. Got a lot of exciting auction items, like if you need a puppy, or if you need a Traeger grill, otherwise there's some other fun stuff on there too, so.
Wendy, can, can people buy tickets at the door? Do you have to buy ahead of time?
Well, we're trying to do as many ahead of time as possible, so we're, so hopefully we're set on food. But, yeah, so we still have some available at the door.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have a big screen TV there that we can watch the USD women play also at 5:30? Otherwise, my iPhone's going to die on me real quick.
Can you rent one and put one off in your office over there?
I'll have a charger.
Can Mr. Gibbon and I can go watch?
I might.
The Yotes go win, beat them to lead eight.
I might end up buying something way too much, like I did last year.
Well, we may run you up on a couple of things. All for a good cause.
All right, we'll move on to item six. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. You have in your agenda packet the proclamation that I am planning to read next Tuesday, a week from today, which is recognized as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and that was established in 2017 by President Trump. Words going out in local newspapers this week about the event to all the towns and the counties, and I'm also reaching out to the local veterans service organizations, VFWs, American Legions, and so forth, and hope to have a good attendance. I have been recognizing Vietnam-era veterans since I started this job, and there's a commemorative partner program that recognizes the veterans with the pin, and so I guess any veteran that hasn't received a pin yet will hopefully be able to get one next week, and so I invite you to attend if you are able. It's at 11 o'clock right here. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Well, I know the word's going out, Susan, because I received it from Terry Harris at the Harrisburg Legion, and I, I'm a, I got it from the DAV as well.
Okay.
I'm a lifetime member of the DAV. They sent it out already, so.
Okay. Oh, my.
I know the word is spreading.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it should be, it should be good, and it's, you know, the governor's also signed a proclamation and, for that same day, Welcome Home Day, and so it's, it's, we're hoping to generate some excitement for that.
Thank you for your work on that, Susan.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If I could add, I know that one of the things I'll be talking to our auditor about, and since Susan is here, is placing on the agenda April 5th something about our, our war memorials that we have behind the courthouse, and I know, Susan, your name has been brought up, that you would like to make a presentation along with several other individuals in the community in regard to possibly
Moving.
moving those memorials and raising funds to do so, and where, so I just want to know that your name has been brought up with several others about this April 5th presentation that you are preparing, apparently.
Okay.
Thanks, Susan. Move on to item seven on our agenda.
During the implementation of our new software system, we have been going through the county aid lanes. You may remember last year when we were talking about annually taking off the ones that have deceased over five years ago. The first one I've got, these are county aid lanes that are lacking personal identification. No birth dates, no social security numbers, no way for us to indefinitely say it's yours. So I'm asking that we just go ahead and approve the compromise of the in-house lanes for the $28,242.61.
So move, Madam Chair, on the recommendation of our auditor.
So we're going to pay for them anyway, even though we don't know who they are?
We've already paid for them.
Okay.
We're just not, we don't have any way of collecting them.
Gotcha. All right. That makes more sense. All right. We've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, just for clarity. So this simply is a motion to wipe these off the books.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, clean up our accounts receivable.
As I look through that, most of this, the boxes were no information available, correct?
On, on this specific one, there is no information available on any of them. They are a combination of welfare, court-appointed attorney, prisoner care, information that we've leaned, but we've never been able to collect any identifying, so when the title companies come to us, they say, is this John Smith, and you say, I have no idea, because we have nothing to back it against.
What steps do we take to investigate it and try and figure out?
Well, these are from, the earliest one is 1972, the latest one is 1993. So now we try to research more information when we put it into it. I'm not necessarily sure what the steps were at this point.
Sure. Okay, well, any further discussion, questions for staff? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
I'm going to vote no on this one, just simply because I don't know what steps have been taken to actually try and locate these folks. We've got lots of different ways of doing that now that maybe didn't exist.
That's probably true. However, if we, I don't have the names on here, but if we go on there and we say John Smith from court in 1972, I don't even know if the court records are still available for it, so.
And you might be right. You might be right.
Yep. Nope, I get your point.
Okay. Anyway, it passed.
But we will be going through, and as we find them, we are going to continue to try to clean them up. The next one I've got is to approve the compromise on county aid lanes for deaths. These are deaths that happened 2016 and earlier, in the amount of 18,863.48.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Sheri?
Sheri, just maybe more so for the public, but a little bit for myself here. How does this process work? You know, what, what is the, I mean, is it similar to the, the other previous ones that we just acted on, or?
What do you mean, the process? So we get a verification, these are people that do have identifying information.
Okay.
We get verification that they are deceased. They've been deceased more than five years, I believe it is. So per a conversation that we had earlier in the year, that we were just going to bring these to you once a year and get them taken off the books because they've gone through the probate and everything else.
Okay, so, yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at here, is probate has gone through, and these are still not paid for even after the estate's been adjudicated?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Who made the first?
We didn't get a first.
Oh. I'll be the first.
All right.
I thought you said you have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second now. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
The next though we have is our caseworker services that we have with Minnehaha County. They have outlined on the briefing form or in their letter that they attached to me, the two major changes on there. The first one is that they're going to extend the period so that the only time they have to come in is if there's been a wage increase for the person that provides the services. The second one, they decreased the health insurance costs that we were paying previously for. The second one, they decreased the health insurance cost that we were paying previously for the caseworker. This would be, uh last year we did 83,943.29. This year it's gonna be 80,495.42. And it will extend the contract to 2023, I mean to, what was it? I didn't put that in my sheet, but it extends it, I think, five years. Instead of coming in and renewing it every year because it's due by April 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Um what I would like to say is thank you to everybody involved who negotiated this because it's an example of an instance here where we can save some, we can save money because somebody did the extra work here to dig into the insurance coverage level for the Lincoln County caseworker and determined that uh they didn't need the family level coverage, they only needed single level. So that resulted in some contract cost savings here, so thank you to the team who did that.
You're welcome.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Move on to item 10 on our agenda. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning. There are three abatements on the agenda this morning. Um the first abatement qualifies under South Dakota codified law 10-18-2 subsection 10. Um the county commissioners may abate um if a application for a veteran's exemption is approved, but um that has, did not meet the deadline. So that's this first, it's a gen item 10. Um names are protected because of the HIPAA laws, so I'll refer to it as agenda item 10 in your packet. It's in the abatement amount of $2,382.88.
All right, we've heard the request, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Move on to item 11 on our agenda.
Item number 11 is parcel number 281 dot 94 dot 08 dot 028, under the name of Brittany and Ross Trulia, located at 4417 West Mill Street in Sioux Falls. It's an abatement application for an owner occupied that was um in error uh in our office. Is, the abatement falls under South Dakota codified law 10-18-1, where the um county commission may abate based on if an error had been made. Um this was a previous abatement in 2020, paid 21. Um and just because of the timing of the application, um it extended into the 21 taxes paid 22.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Thank you. Um the next abatement is parcel number 096 dot 49 dot 34 dot 2000. It's under the Colleen Hildebrand Trust. Legal description is the northwest quarter excluding lots H2 and H3 in section 34, township 96 dash 49. The abatement amount is $878.87, um like the previous abatement. Um this had already been vetted through the um abatement process in 2021, excuse me, 2020 paid 21 taxes. Because of the error and the timing of the um error, it extends into the 22, 21 paid 22 tax year.
All right, we've heard the request, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Right, we're gonna go ahead and move into our work session. Um and I do have a short telephonic court hearing that I'm gonna, so I'm gonna step out, probably about 9:25 or so.
Okay.
And so, not to be rude, but I just gotta take care of that.
You bet, thank you. Um if you would give us a, just a couple minutes to set up, I do have a PowerPoint, although it's not a presentation, it's more of a work session, but I did put together some slides that were included in your packet. Um I do have Ethan down here as well, um so if there's any further questions on the, you know, the land portion and how we came up with the land values for the 2022 assessment year, um I may refer some of those questions to Ethan because he's, he's the one that really dug in and um did a great analysis on our land value. So I will set up the presentation, I'm gonna put a table out because um much like my presentation is, is, is not a presentation, it's just a, a work session. Sherry's gonna be involved in it, so that all three of us will be speaking to you on behalf of this appeals work session.
All right, well, why don't we take, um you want a five-minute break?
Ten.
Is five enough? Okay.
Nine minutes, sounds good.
And would you just, each of you, kind of just for anybody that might be listening and streaming, just go ahead and introduce yourselves and what your job is. And I'm gonna ask you guys to be free with sharing that microphone, because when you aren't speaking right into it, you can't hear if you're on the phone or streaming.
You bet. Carla Gosin, the Lincoln County Director of Equalization.
I'm Ethan Piskey, the Deputy Director of Equalization.
Sherry Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor.
So for the 2022 um boards of equalization, the three of us felt it was very important that we do a work session.
Sure, and, and I agree with you, and so in the sense that if commissioners have questions, are you okay if we interrupt?
Yes.
And ask a question, or do you want to wait till the end?
No, please interrupt, let's, you know, let, before we move on, let's address each question as they come. Sure, okay, thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
So we decided to have this workshop session for a couple different reasons. Um we did schedule our appeals slightly different last year and um and then with the previous years, uh we set a week to do appeals rather than every Tuesday for four Tuesdays. On the, from the first of the, when we opened the boards to the end, there's about four Tuesdays that are in between there. I think it worked out pretty well. Um, you know, gave us a little more time to prepare for some of the appeals. Just wanted to get some feedback from the commission on if that's something they're, they're wanting to do again this year. I know Sherry sent out um a schedule for everybody the week of the April 18th. Um we have some sessions that, we have a quorum, we have some sessions that, um we don't have a quorum yet. And I think, you know, after, at the end of today, maybe we can decide on how we want to go forward with it. But I do want to remind you that um the boards do start on April 12th, so you will have to meet on the 12th and to start um the equalization process, and that's county and consolidated. Um a suggestion that I have, and maybe uh Sherry will agree with it, we can do some of our administrative type changes um during that day, which um what we call administrative type changes is um we sent out an assessment notice, um taxpayer has um contacted our office, and we uh, we have an agreement that um probably based on an inspection um took place of, after our assessment notices went out. So we're gonna come up with a recommendation that they're in agreement of. So that would be an administrative type change. Yeah, I would, you know, I would like to handle those administrative type changes maybe on the first day. Because we do have to open it up on that day.
That's what I would, I would agree with that.
Okay. Um and we will have a few of those, some of those are, like I said, they're, they're properties that we have um gone out and re-inspected, made some changes, and the property owners in agreements of it. Um some other type changes could be, you know, maybe they have a current appraisal that, you know, we, we've sorted through and we're in agreements of that, um that fee type appraisal. We also have uh on the agenda that I'd like to group on that first day is an omitted property. Um this will be something very new to you. Um we did find that we missed a home to put on the assessment roll. So we'll have an omitted type property that we'll bring on the 12th. Just a, a brief on that, uh so there was an owner occupied form filled out and submitted to our um, to our office in February, and they said they were gonna, they owned and occupied this home on February 12th. So um Courtney Smith, our property technician, brought this to um, to the Ethan and I, and we're like, oh, we don't have a house there. Um so we contact the uh Planning and Zoning Office, and through some digging, there, there was an actual building permit that was um issued on the home, but we did not receive a copy of the building permit. And I'm not gonna get into details on Toby's part of um missing it. It, it was in an override status or a hold status, so when they, they take their building permits and they, they transfer them to us on a monthly basis, that one was missed because it was in some type of hold status or override, and I don't know his terminology, so. But we have been notified of it since that um praiser has gone out, done an inspection, we will put a value on, and we'll place the value on the 12th um for this property owner. And they have the right to appeal that new value. They don't know what it is yet, but there will be a form that will be sent out, and then we'll set up a hearing that if they're not in agreement with that value, you'll, you'll essentially hear that appeal on that day.
Yeah, um we talked about that. If you have questions, just chime in.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
You bet.
Thanks, Carla. I'm gonna have a lot of questions on this because we missed our requirement of sending out the notification in a timely manner, then, as far as the valuation on that property?
No.
We didn't?
No.
We missed the house, or we didn't miss the deadline to send out the valuation on that house?
Yeah, the assessment notice went out, but there is a, and I, I apologize, I didn't bring the codified law. There is procedure if it's an omitted property and it goes through the auditor. Um the auditor sets a time that, hey, this property has been omitted from the tax roll. We need to add it back in.
Sure, and that's retroactive to a point where we can add it, valuation and add it to the tax roll?
2022 taxes paid 2023, yes.
And that's very, I'm, that's gonna be my biggest question, is if I was that person and I received what would have been just the land valuation as my assessment? Yeah, it, it would err in their favor, but we are covered by statute of, on an omitted property.
Omitted property, yes.
How long do we have to add that, then, if it's an omitted property?
I didn't bring that law with me.
Okay, I'll have that.
It's, it's within, you know, I can't remember if it's like a 10-day.
Okay.
They have to be notified 10 days prior to the hearing.
Okay.
It, there is a amount of time.
Okay.
By statute that we are required to send them notification. We're, we're well.
Within the statute.
We're well within the statute.
And then were there any other statute or any law changes since last year to this year that affects what we do as assessments, or what you do as on the assessments? And could you somewhere in this review those with us as well?
Yep, um so within our presentation, um it's like the third or fourth page.
Okay, very good.
Um there is a um, the agricultural classification changed July 1st, 2021, which affected our 22 assessments, and we'll touch on that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Back to scheduling, is that uh, I guess, feedback is welcome, is it uh, you want to do a week? Do you want to do every Tuesday? You want to do every Wednesday? What are you, what are you comfortable with during this appeal season? And maybe I should go forward, be, maybe we come back to that.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we come back, why don't we come back to that?
Yeah, because I, I think the next slide will tell you um what we're dealing with on appeals. So maybe we see what we're dealing with before we make the decision on the scheduling. And that, since I sent that out on Friday, those numbers have changed. We have a total of um as of this morning, 350 appeals that have gone to all the boards. So um city and township boards. We still have open dates and deadlines. Um Canton has um an appeal deadline of April 5th. So there still will be more appeals coming in because of that April 5th deadline. Also, anybody that lives out of state or out of taxing jurisdiction that they're appealing in, they also have the April 5th deadline that they can adhere to. So if they live outside the taxing jurisdiction that they're appealing, or out of state, obviously, they have until the April 5th deadline. So that number is, will tend to grow. Um but not to frighten anybody on the numbers, um they're very similar to last year. I think the biggest thing that happened to us this year was we received a third of our appeals, so about 150 on the very last day. And that made it very difficult for our equalization office to get information to the local and the city boards. Um Ethan, myself, a couple staff members, Donna Eckley, Dave Erdman, um we worked nights and week, we worked all weekend long to get this stuff in because of the Monday deadline, um that was yesterday, so.
Carla, question, so could this number be less? I mean, if people appealed them last night with their townships and worked something out, so it could be less as well, correct?
Yes, so very good question. Um of these 350-some appeals, there were, I'm gonna, I, I'm, I have to make the best guess I can, there are just slightly under 100 that were administrative type changes. And some of those were based on the egg classifications. Since the law, I, I'm going back and forth, and that's why I'm like, I didn't want it to be a presentation, it's more of a discussion. I'm gonna bounce around from the presentation. Um the law changed July 1, 2021 for agricultural classification. And the biggest change that happened was in the income portion of the law. So we did a re um, requalifying for any property owner that had 40 acres or less because Lincoln County has the 40-acre rule on agricultural land. So we sent out, anybody that had 40 acres or less, we sent out a requalifying application to make sure they met the new law criteria. Um of those, I believe it was about. Yeah, uh, yep, 150, 160 did not quali, no longer qualified for agricultural status. I did send a um, a letter notifying them prior to the assessment notice that they did not qualify. So they were notified twice that they did not meet the requirements set forth by SDCL 106112, and the reason. Of those 150 that didn't qualify because they either didn't get the information, income information, or they missed the deadline, um some of those folks have now appealed and brought us the, the documentation where they would reclassify as agricultural. What happened was obviously the income portion. Some of the ones where they, we said they didn't qualify, but now they qualify is, you know, the, the ownership or the management unit. You could have folks that own 20 acres of Carla Gosin, um but there could also be Gosin Investments LLC or something, and we didn't know, were they involved? Are they together? Are they same management unit? So they brought a lot of that type of documentation um to us, and um, and then the, the income. So we are requalifying of the 170 about, I don't, slightly under um probably 80.
Are those?
Yeah, I mean.
To make that a little more clear, which, which she meant by Carla, 20 acres of Carla Gosin would be, it's deeded as Carla Gosin, and then she may have another 80 acres somewhere that's deeded under uh Gosin LLC. And so you, there's no way for us to know that Carla owns Gosin LLC, it could be a relative of hers, and so that, that requires further, you know, verification. It could be a relative of hers and so that, that requires further, you know, verification.
So Carla, you're going to see if they requalify? And then are those, um, parcels that you might be able to bring to us the first day for agreed upon changes?
Those will be, um, corrected or, um, addressed at local board. So local, but we already sent all that information that they re, they qualify based on duh, duh, duh to our local folks and they're making the change. You won't see those.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Either way, the decision was determined and gave, given to the local boards.
Okay.
And you're assuming they're going to take action on them that way appropriately?
So, great question. So last year we gave some recommendations based on whatever, some of the boards didn't act on those recommendations. So yes, those will be brought to the April 12th meeting because they met the requirement. And if the board, local board didn't act on them, I would, I would strongly encourage that the county board act on them.
So Carla, um, you mentioned to me once in the conversation that if they prove they made $2,500, then they would qualify again as ag, correct? So those people that brought that doc- documentation to their, you know, I guess township meetings or to you, do we still see them then during the appeal process, those four days?
Okay, so, um, to address the first part of that question, we received their income information within our office. We didn't want that going out to our local folks. So we qualified them or did not qualify them in our office based on their income guidelines. Now, it's not income of, uh, their entire income, it's income from that property.
Correct.
You know, so they have a house and, um, and they're not doing any farmings per se on that. I mean, the income has to come from that parcel. At least 2,500. Um, so, no, you won't see their income information. We didn't even keep it. We didn't want that information on, in their file. I, I felt that was more of a personal information rather than public.
So Carla, if they had, if they had 28 acres and, uh, they used a house for an acre and they had the rest of it sewed down to, uh, a garden or something like that, you know, and they sold at the end of their driveway and they had $3,100, that would qualify, right?
We had a couple of those.
That's income produced from the remaining portion of the land they own. Although this is their house and, but that would dip them over, okay?
We had two of them that were similar to that. We had one that, uh, had a parcel where they had sweet corn. Um, and, you know, they generated a lot of money off that sweet corn, so that qualified them. And, um, so the first criteria you have to meet, it has to be agricultural productive. If they can't meet that first criteria, the other two don't matter. So first is agricultural production has to be coming from the property. Once they meet that criteria, they have to meet one of the other two, acres or income. And sometimes they were adjoining, you know, uh, like Ethan had explained, where they met the 80-acre requirement or the 40 or, or whatnot. And the other was the 2,500 in the last three of five years.
And just to be clear, it's $2,500 worth of gross income, it's not net. So, you know, you can have all the expenses in the world as long as you.
As opposed if they had a building and, uh, they painted, uh, cars or tractors for their neighbors and they charged so much and they got 2,500 bucks?
Yeah, I, I don't believe that painting tractors would count, qualify as income derived from agriculture.
That wouldn't qual, that would not qualify.
Correct.
Although they made the 2,500, it is an ag-related.
And it, it is a very, uh, complex situation. I mean, it's very burdensome for us to try to determine where $2,500 was derived from when you can look at a property and, and doesn't look like there's any farming there, but they have a Schedule F and it says that they've made whatever amount of money over $2,500 in, in the past three years. So, um, we've seen, uh, properties that are on five acres and they have, uh, proved that they're alf, they're growing alfalfa and hang that on four acres and they can qualify. And then we have situations where people have around 35 acres of pasture and they lease that out to a farmer and they don't qualify because their, their lease rent on pasture isn't high enough on 35 acres to make $2,500. So there may be some creative, um, financing or accounting, uh, going on. Uh, but, you know, we just have to follow what's, what's written in law. Um, and unfortunately, it's not always fair. Uh, but we do our best to, to, uh, make sure that we're, we're following that accordingly.
That five acres of alfalfa should qualify for a national contest winner per ton.
And, and I did look at the sweet corn situation too, and he was barely making it, uh, $2,500 in, in three of the five years, but he did.
Carla, do you know when we last as a commission reviewed this, uh, issue of, uh, I think it's 10-6-112 sub-two, where the Board of County Commissioners talks about increasing or setting the minimum acre requirement? I don't think during my time here, we've ever discussed that issue.
It, I believe it was in 2009 ordinance for 2010 assessments.
Okay.
And, uh, I wasn't here, uh, during that time, but just through conversations in the office from staff that was here. Um, I think you followed the same acre requirement as Minnehaha County. They also changed that same year. And that's when productivity went into play. So there was a lot of changes that happened in 2009 for 2010.
I received a lot of comment about this from people over the last few weeks. And their number one question they had was, out of many questions, of course, was when that was set?
Yep.
And I'll report that back to them.
Yep. We did attach that ordinance when we first sent out our application to requalify. So, I mean, much like our assessment notices, some of those just, you know, go off to the side and they probably don't read it. And so we, we try to give them that information, but it's, we're busy in our lives too, sometimes we forget.
Thank you.
And since we're still on this subject, I'd just like to point out that, you know, being classed as agricultural um, and being zoned as agricultural is two totally different things that are completely unrelated. Um, and that's always a common misconception from taxpayers. Uh, you know, they claim, well, I'm zoned ag, why don't you classify me as ag? Well, if you want to be classed as ag, you need to meet the criteria that's set forth in 10-6-112. You know, it's just that simple. Um, but, you know, unfortunately, it makes a huge difference. Uh, the value, I would say on average for a property classed as ag is somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 per acre. But if you pay attention to property sales, property that gets platted into a, a nice little homestead around Sioux Falls can sell for easily $50,000 an acre, um, you know, up to five acres all day, all year. I mean, we, we look at those sales. And so, you know, when you have a, uh, one property that's assessed at $2,500 an acre and another one that's assessed at $65,000 an acre, things get distorted and look unequal really fast. Um, and the thing with these, this agricultural classification is, is once you're approved, if you don't sell it or make any plat changes, anything like that, it, it'll probably, won't get reviewed, reviewed again for another 40 years. So you can stop farming, but you're still going to get classed as ag.
Well, if you, uh, if you drive up to Schindler and you go to Alman Acres, that whole subdivision is zoned A1 agriculture. And I've met with those folks and they've asked me about this. They thought they were actually zoned residential and I said, no, you're A1 ag. But your property isn't, you know, there is no farming going on in Schindler. So that's a perfect example, Ethan.
It happens more so in the townships though, because almost all of their neighbors are classed ag. They look at the guy who owns 160 acres next to them. And they may own 10 acres, 15 acres, and their value is going to be the same as the guy with 160 acres.
Right. Right, it's a function.
And I, I, I do wonder if that, that gap is, is widening and widening every year and, and not really being looked at on, on taxation basis. But, uh, that's a little over my head and out of my area of expertise.
It's a function of the marketplace.
So just going back to the numbers and scheduling, I mean, we're not going to see 100, 340 appeals at county board. That number will be less. What that number will be, I don't know. Uh, boards met last night, we made recommendations. Um, we'll have, I know one township will probably appeal back every decision. There were just, they were bad changes. That's all I can say, they were very.
They're based on feelings and not facts. Unfortunately, in our office, uh, that's the hard part of our job is to base all of our decisions on facts, not feelings. You know, we get told about a lot of hard situations going on, but unfortunately, there's no market adjustment for, uh, a hardship.
Carla, would you, I think one thing that has to be brought out is when you or the commission lowers their taxes, somewhere that equalization.
We lower the assessment.
Assess value, excuse me, I misspoke. All right, which I do regularly, but then, anyway, that has to be equalized somewhere, does it not? I mean, somebody picks that up?
Yeah, if, if you lower one, everybody else is going to pick up the difference.
Yes.
The taxes at the end collected are the same.
So I, so, you know, if you give somebody a break, somebody else picks it up.
Yeah, if you were a township commissioner and you give somebody a break, you're accepting to pay part of the difference along with everybody else inside your township or city.
Will there be many commercial type properties, do you know?
That was some of our late appeals. Uh, we had, uh, a big chunk of commercial that came in at the very last moment, um, apartments.
After five o'clock on, on Thursday, between five o'clock and midnight.
Yeah.
So then we had Friday, Saturday, Sunday and part of Monday to get those out to everybody before their meeting last night. We've worked as hard as we possibly can.
Yeah.
So given that would be out of, out of the normal realm of most everybody other than our staff that's, you know, been trained in doing that, how are you working with the municipalities and/or townships, if they have one, to try to educate them enough to try to, to work through that commercial type property? Or are you saying, do your best and we'll, we'll?
No. Um, we, we do the same write-up for them as we do for you. It might be a little more detailed by the time we get to you, um, because we're looking at trends and, you know, really looking at the condition factors. But for the most part, what you see, the, the subject, the information, the comps, the map, you know, um, they got all of that. And if there is some, um, correspondence taking place with our commercial folks on, on incomes and expenses, um, we're trying to get that information to our local folks for them to make the decisions right away on the local level. Yeah, I mean, we are, I mean, I hope we're educating them. I mean, I, we hold the meetings, we're, we're almost in daily contact with our clerks. And that's on 20, you know, 25, um, 25 of them, whether they're to townships or the cities, trying to get them educated on the entire process.
Carla, with the assessments that's gone up, a lot of people have called. And, you know, I think real estate somewhere has to play in the fact that with the amount of property that is listed for a price and people pay well beyond that price. They've been in a bidding war. One neighborhood that I'm very familiar with called and they were aghast at what they assessment had went up. But when we talked to them, I also found out that their properties, three of them, had sold for well beyond what this person that had lived there and paid probably 200 and, you know, 50, 60,000. And properties were selling now for four and five and six. And understanding the frustration they have, but we don't control that. That is, you take it at market and do what your neighborhood is. So the frustration, I mean, they have to yell and be upset with somebody. But it's hard for them to understand, you know, that this bidding war is only raising their assessed valuations. And what happens when we don't bid anymore? What happens when property starts to sell far less than what they actually paid for it? So what do we do in that case?
That question has also been addressed, um, to us in the office, um, several times a day. We do the same type of analysis on the market, whether it goes up or down. Um, we can lower them just as easy as we raise them. It's the same process, we do the same type of analysis. Um, sure. Once again, we're going to skip around a little bit. This one's interesting, I know it looks confusing and it's very busy. Um, here are our, our sales, our arms-length transaction, our good sales that come in each year. Now, we gave you 20, 21 and our 22 stats. And you can see that, um, our assessments to selling prices stay pretty strong throughout the year. So we tend to make three, if you're not in a reappraisal area and you're just in this, you've already been reappraised and things are just kind of a market adjustment. You can see very small market adjustments happen in 2020, 2020 for the 2021 assessment year. I mean, the, the, it goes up and down. And, you know, you can see in the winter months, uh, we do good as the summer hits. You know, the, the market is really strong and, you know, our, our assessed values to sell prices, you know, fluctuate accordingly. We broke it down into quarter. And you can see, you know, each quarter, we say, stay pretty consistent. This year, so in 2021, we dropped, we tanked. I mean, it is a curve that goes only down. So that's truly our market. What's happening in the mar, it started happening slightly last year in 2020 for the 2021 assessments. We saw that continuing to drop. But this year, just, it, 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 it just started going down ever so fast. I mean, when you're seeing, you know, 1% to 2% market, um, adjustments every month, I mean, that's strong market. And it's concerning because for, for me and for staff, because, you know, we've reappraised and we did really good and we were holding strong on our assessed values. And now we're coming back and saying, well, the market changed and now we got to increase it again, you know, 20%. Those are, those, that's a hard sale, especially, you know, over the years when we weren't reappraising, you're seeing 20%, 25%. Um, this year shows that that market was so strong. And, you know, there's, the only thing we can do is what the law says. Our assessed values are market values.
Carla, if I could, so when I'm looking at these graphs, the first 18 and 19, 19 to 20, those first two years, even at the end of the fourth quarter, we were still meeting the requirement of 80%.
Yeah.
No, no, the requirement is between 85 and 100.
Yeah, so 80, but we're staying close.
Yes.
We're substantially below that 85% requirement on the fourth quarter of 2021. Um, so it's just, you know, it's 15% just from first quarter to fourth quarter in the same year and, uh, that we're, where the market is just jumping.
Um, and it's not stopping. I did the sales of November of 2021 up till February of this year. We are down to 77%. I mean, that was our fourth quarter.
Yeah.
And this is our first quarter and we're already at 70 percentile, assessment to sell price. I mean, it's.
That's what our twen, new 2022 values with all of these increases you're going to hear about during appeals.
So what people are afraid of is, is although we're talking about assessments, what they're afraid of is taxation.
I agree.
So Madam Auditor, what I would like us to see if we could do is, again, visually create a graph. Our budget stays the same. So, you know, if we have 10 homes and they've all gone up plus or minus the average of the assessment from the county, how that house will pay a little bit more or this house will pay actually less because it's equated, uh, for our budget. Now, I also would like to do it the same thing with what the township budget would be and how they can adjust their budget should be steady. I think they're frozen requirement, they can only go up by CPI and, and growth. Uh, city, are they under the same requirement as well? Is a school district on the same requirement? So they sh, can understand where the impact is coming from if their assessments do go up. Because in a county. Because in a county situation, one goes up, one goes down in comparison to the average of the change.
Yep, it's just like a scale.
Yeah, so can we, can we create a visual so people can, you know, visually understand that? So they have a clear understanding that just because their assessments went up fifteen percent, county taxation is not gonna go up fifteen percent.
No.
Unless the average increase was zero.
I do have that, do, can you get access to that email that I sent you?
Um, no, but you should have it in your, you sent it to them, right?
No.
But you understand what I'm talking.
Keep talking and I'll find it.
Oh, thank you.
I think, you know, the, the point you're making is that we could double all of our assessments next year and as long as you guys make no changes to the budget, nobody's taxes change at all.
Which we're required, we, our max, we're, we're frozen unless we do a bond or something like that.
You're, you're held by CPI and, and any growth that, that we had.
Yep.
But if we take those out of the equation and we doubled everybody's assessments next year, their taxes stay exactly the same the following year.
Relatively same, yeah.
However, my understanding is that the school district has a little more flexibility on how much they can change their mill levy or their budget um, when we double assessments. Uh, I don't know if there's any cap on that.
Yeah, so that's where I want the public to.
I would really like to know that myself too, Commissioner, thank you.
Would, Jim, a school district is not held nearly to the same constraints that the county is. I don't know how much a, a levy a school district can have, but it is quite large. Ours is what, three percent or CPI, which is ever less. So ours will be three percent this year.
Plus the growth, yeah.
Well, and we've been very blessed with growth in Lincoln County, so that's, number's a little higher than some of the normal.
Yeah.
Capital outlay is the one thing that school districts can raise and lower quite frequently from year to year.
Actually, the state did freeze that as well.
Can we talk one at a time, please?
And they've got the max on the capital outlay of three dollars.
As Sheri's looking that up, I just, you know, we're trying to touch base on appeals. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip-flop through, you know, what changes, what things change the value? You know, what affects value? Well, building permits or improvements affect value, you know, adding a new garage, adding, you know, new remodel, complete remodel, that's gonna affect your value. And condition, and in our KAMA, our mass appraisal software, condition affects value. And we track condition. So in this example, we say we, we have a roof that's ten years old, but it's not leaking and, you know, it's normal for the age of the home. And we're, we're not gonna condition anything on that because it's all, it's a normal condition, it's not leaking. But if we had the same roof situation and, you know, it's, it's leaking and they're causing ex, external and internal damage, we're gonna, we're gonna condition that down. And so that's gonna lower the value. Um, I think one thing that we probably didn't do the best on that I'm hoping we can do better during this appeal season is give you some indication of condition on, on our subject property specifically. I think if, if we were to be able to hit the home run, maybe that would help. Um, you guys make the decision. I'm, okay, Sheri overrode me, so.
Oh, sorry.
The Department of Revenue sent out some information late last week. They're getting a lot of phone calls on the high assessment increases for twenty-twenty-two, not in Lincoln County, but probably from some of Lincoln County. From my indication, it was a lot West River. So the Department of Revenue sent a bunch of flyers to the Directors of Equalization and said, here, share this with your commissioners, share this with your staff, share it with the people. Um, and yesterday, the Department of Revenue also gave a presentation, I watched it at twelve-thirty last night, by the way. And, you know, they went over some of these, um, these, this information that Sheri is about to present. It's some really good information on assessments and taxes and caps and, you know, but we have to drill back in our office, we're just the assessors, we're just doing the values. You know, and I know people are concerned about their taxes and, you know, we hear a lot of that and, you know, it breaks our heart. We don't wanna try to push people out of their homes. That's not what we're doing. We're just, we're following the law on, on the assessment part of it. And Sheri, do you wanna?
And if I could take two seconds to comment on, on pushing people out of their homes comment, because we do, we do get that, that a lot. You know, really, we're trying to keep it fair for everybody. You know, if we, if we, if we make cuts or breaks for, for only a certain group of people, it makes it more expensive for everybody else who wants to buy a home or stay in their home. Um, and same goes for the, the larger, um, commercial type properties. If you make a million dollar cut on, on a certain property in that taxing jurisdiction, it makes affordable housing a lot less affordable.
Well, and I think a common question is, if my assessed value increases, do my taxes increase? And as the county association has articulated and they've put this out, it depends, right?
Yep.
It depends.
So.
It depends on whether there's upward pressure on our county budgets. This commission here, just like all commissions, sets its county budget. And so if we, as a commission, vote to put upward pressure on our budget, we put upward pressure on property taxes. And conversely, if you put downward pressure on your budget, you put downward pressure on your property taxes.
With, with that note though, we are only able to do them by growth and CPI. So we'd have to work within that, but here's an example of the math that the Department of Revenue sent out. Um, so the city has ten million, ten billion of value. The city asked for ten thousand of taxes last year, the city's levy is a dollar. Property taxes of a hundred and fifty, paid a hundred and fifty in taxes. So the assessor increases the values by fifty percent as required by the market. The city now has fifteen billion of value, city increases their tax request by growth and CPI, which is five percent in this scenario, making the request ten thousand five hundred. City's levy is now point seven. Property tax is now assessed at two twenty-five and they pay one fifty-seven fifty. The increase between the one fifty-seven fifty and the one fifty is the five percent increase of the CPI and growth, not of the assessment. So that's a, a big thing that people don't see because I, I, as everybody else, I hear it all the time. My taxes went up seventy percent. Well, they haven't. There are some other talking points that they sent out.
Could you go, I have a question on that last.
Yeah.
Um, I, I find it unfortunate that they pooled the growth and the CPI in that evaluation.
Well, they, that's.
The reason is, you're actually only affected by the CPI. The growth is affected into, not consideration into the growth, that's the total assessment. So the actual individual property should only be affected by the CPI adjustment. The growth factor should be handled by the growth, uh, 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 properties that have been, uh, brought into the county. Am I not correct?
So, yeah, I'm gonna just show you what I do for the growth in CPI. If I can get this, this is hard looking at two screens.
Because the growth in our county budget is dealt with the growth in the county. The CPI is, would be the only ones affecting the existing properties.
The growth happens in every jurisdiction.
Yeah, but that part of our budget, budget is handled by the new homes, the new business, the new building in our budget. Am I not correct? Because that's a neutral effect to our budget. Because that's why we get the growth factor. If we had zero growth, we'd only have the CPI, which then would go the existing. But the growth is because of the additional properties. So then that is a neutral effect to the existing properties. The actual only ones that are, the only thing that's impacting existing properties is the CPI.
Well, let's clarify on the CPI, we're tossing that around. CPI now is darn near eight percent.
It's three percent.
Yeah.
Well, well, we can.
What we can do is three percent of that is all. So when we talk about it, right now, we're talking three percent, period, angle, that's it.
Okay, let's make it really slow.
That's loading. I just wanna say a few other things. So we did our reappraisal, it's normal. Um, we did Lennox Worthy, Fairview Townships of Fairview, Highland, Lincoln, Delaware. Um, but some of the other changes that we took, that took place in twenty-twenty-two that were really strong, adjustments was we changed our land valuation system on our acreages. Um, there is a map that shows you how we, um, how we tiered each section of the county. Um, our first two acres up north is being valued at sixty-five thousand dollars per acre and then it tiers to fifteen and then five and you can see our next set of tiers is forty-two, ten, and five. Those, all those adjustments were based on, are you ready?
No.
Okay.
Here, I'll put you back on the line.
Were based off of these graphs. You can see in blue, we have our assessed values and they're, they're on that lower scale, okay. Sorry, right here. There's our, our map of how we tiered our acreages, um, in the county. And it truly was sales-based. We not only took the last two to three years of sales, we went back as far as two thousand fourteen in some cases, right? Is that right? Yeah, we had some fourteen sales.
Tried to save two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen really and up because the market has moved so fast in the last few years. If you're not looking at a twenty-twenty sale, you're not looking at a market value.
Yeah, but we did throw in some just for the sake of feeling confident with our numbers.
If you were to look at what our land values were in two thousand fourteen assessed compared to what some of the property was in two thousand fourteen, I mean, we're at maybe thirty-five percent of market value, so that's why we have such ugly adjustments. I mean, I think now we are at a very market value. It's a very sound land value, um, countywide, except for the bottom range of townships, which we have yet to get to, and the map said various.
If we can go back to that last graph, I have a question on that. Is there any adjustment whether the property is on a township road or on a, you and I are gonna disagree on that. And I'm gonna, okay, I think we need to be making that adjustment. There's substantial variation in property sales if it's off of a township road, gravel township road or a county gravel road or a hard surface road.
I, I can't wait for you to show me that study, Mike.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we took a look at a very in-depth study on this and, um, like I said, Ethan did a very good job and it's holding strong this year because on this particular chart where I showed you the November, December, and February, whatever, sales, I broke it down and our lot sales are literally in the nineties. I mean, it's unprecedented. I mean, when you look at the residential part of these, this analysis, we go down to seventy-nine percent. But our acreages are holding strong. That means our, he did a very good job.
So no, even, let's take the highest, five acre parcel, uh, what would that assessment be? Just nothing on it, just the land.
So it depends which range you're in there.
I wanna do the highest range.
So the highest is gonna be closest to Sioux Falls, it's those top five townships up there.
So what's a five acre?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand. You take sixty-five thousand dollars an acre each for the first two acres. So that's a hundred and thirty thousand and then you would add in the next three acres, which are fifteen thousand dollars each. So a hundred and thirty plus forty-five thousand additional, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now, those are selling for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There's just a very strong market for acreages outside the Sioux Falls metro area.
There is, and if, if you look here.
I'm, so I'm gonna give you a reference, even in Turner County, hard surface road, recent auction, five acres, a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
That's not my problem or my business. I don't get to see those sales and I don't have time to look at them.
I'm just saying, even farther away than what we're talking about there in the highest tier, the market is still blowing up.
Sure, okay, I see your point.
Yeah.
So, these are a couple of graphs we put together quick, just to kinda show you how, where things were at last year versus this year on those land values. The blue line on the bottom is gonna show you the twenty-twenty-one land values. Um, and these are like six sales, because there aren't many. When you see land sales, they're typically a new plat. Those sales are gonna be rejected, so it takes a lot of work to look through those and see if they're an arm length transaction, open market transaction. So anyway, these are a few sales that you can use to compare along with their sale value. So the bottom line's gonna show you what the value was last year. The green line is gonna show you what the value is this year and the red line is the sale value. So you can see the green line hugs the sale values much tighter. Um, they pretty much just did an upward movement there. Um, the next graph here, you can see, well, let's skip down to here. So here's gonna be almost the same as the first graph. Um, it's just showing you our twenty-twenty-one assessed value with the sales we had this year, this past year. So from November first of twenty-twenty to October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. And then this is gonna show you our current assessed values with the past year's land sales. So this has many more sales in it because there are new plats. This is the first year those are being assessed, that's why you see many more sales. And you can see our assessment follows that trend pretty tight, a lot tighter than it ever has been.
I get this comment from, I get this same comment as well from a lot of people. How come we don't have more of a, how come assessed value doesn't track more closely with real-time sales? Well, I think you all as a staff are attempting to close that gap. That's what I'm seeing here.
Our target's ninety-two percent countywide. So on some, we're at a hundred percent, on some we're at eighty-five. And, you know, we are above a hundred on some, we try not to be, and we're under on some too, but it's a, it's a matter of statistics and statistically, we're doing well.
And it's an imperfect process too, so you're doing the best you can.
I have a question that is presented, I think it's Union County that was, that we're talking. And there, they try to hit eighty-five percent, just minimum, and we're at ninety-two. What makes us, or Carla, explain that if you would. Does every county go for the same number?
No, they do not go for the same number.
I think in the past, we've shown you where everybody has, has ended up, you know, countywide with their statistics and where we stand versus other counties, so we could get that sheet out again.
But do we determine this ahead of time? Do we shoot for ninety-two or do we make that, uh, uh, benchmark for us to work towards or something?
Matt, Carla, could I have a statement there quick? So even if we're shooting for ninety-two, the state comes in and readjusts it to the, their objective is eighty-five.
Yeah.
So.
Minimum.
Yeah, so a county can get penalized if they're not meeting the eighty-five.
Yes.
We will get a, a reduction in the taxable value, what's the term, I'm having a brain, uh, yeah, equalized, thank you. Uh, equalized, which is done by the state. So even if we're shooting for a hundred percent, the state would come in and adjust it down, uh, to the eighty-five percent. So what their objective is, I think, is more to be cautious so that the end of the quarter or year, they're not below that eighty-five threshold. So am I, I didn't wanna speak, I just wanted to explain it in my terms.
You did it much better than me. So yes, Mike is exactly right. You know, where the county ends on their level of assessment and their taxable value, every county is going to be taxed, no matter where you are throughout the state, at eighty-five percent. So if they're, if the county assessor decides, because we have that eighty-five to a hundred percent, um, target, if they decide to make assessments be at ninety percent, they're gonna roll back that taxable value to eighty-five percent. So I can tell you, and I have the sheets from the Department of Revenue, very well publicized. There were counties in twenty-twenty-one that were under eighty-five percent. Their taxable value was higher than their assessed value because they did not assess that eighty-five, at least the eighty-five percent low threshold. So the, the state will apply a factor to their assessed value when it comes tax time. And I believe there was four counties out there last year that the factors were higher than, than the eighty, and to get them up to eighty-five percent.
If a county comes along and said, well, we're not going to shoot for, we're gonna lowball this thing and we're only gonna go for eighty or something, seventy-five. The state will come along and automatically adjust that particular county's back up to eighty-five percent.
For taxes.
Do a backdoor tax cut through this process. The only way that you can affect a backdoor tax cut is if you put downward pressure on your annual budget. That is how you lower the taxes.
So I, I had some people, you know, contact me and said, my taxes stayed the same. In fact, they went lower. So that is what then. So that is what then?
Well, what they're looking at is their 2021 assessment payable and 22. So they're, they're not comparing to most likely what everybody else is talking to you about, which is their 2022 assessment taxes payable next year. So you'd have to look at what the value change was in 20, for 2021. Did it stay the same as 2020? And the people around them had increased and there can be reasons for that, building permits, land value changes, not everybody has the same size lot, you know, things of that nature. So there's a lot to look into. It's never that simple, you know, surface level. And if I could jump back to, you know, your question about our target maybe being 80 or 75%, well, then what happens when appeals times comes around and we have to use sales to uphold or defend our, our property assessments? Well, it's kind of hard to use facts when they don't make sense or line up at all. And we're going to, if we're at 80%, then we're under every sale and what's the point of appeals at all? You know, there's nothing to gauge or calibrate or, or base that off of. So, you know, we, we use three approaches on some properties. On any property that appeals, we use at least two. You know, and that, that helps us determine how well or how sound our appraisal was. We do it three times.
Thank you.
Any questions on the land valuations? Mike. Okay, so the next set of slides that I want to show you is, this is a set of statistics, raw data that we look at step one. And this is a non-reappraisal area. And what you can see in this particular slide.
Carla, can I clarify, when you say non, this has never been reappraised?
No.
This area?
This is that bottom tier. If you look at our map, this is the, the township 96. It's that bottom tier. These are all the sales within that township that happened in 2021. When we array these ratios, we come up with a median assessed value of 50%. So we are assessing at 50% of their potential market value. So this year, for those non-reappraisal areas that we've never been door-to-door on, we raised valuations 20%. So that ended us at about a 71% sales to assessment ratio. Now, the next slide shows where we've been and we've been reappraising. I don't know, 20, 25%, yeah. So this, this township, Township 97, we reappraised this year. We be, we started at a ratio of 74%, 75%. But after our reappraisal, we ended up at about 90.6%. Now, that included our door-to-door inspections. It included our new land valuation tables, any type of market adjustments that we may have put on there. So we did really good. I mean, we ended at a 90% ratio. Now, if you go back to the previous slide, it kind of shows where our reappraisals are working. They're working and they're only working for a few years. Because last year, we did this township in 2020. Assessments paid 2021. Well, we ended our assessments at the sales to assessment ratio at 76%, but that was very typical of what happened countywide because of the high market. So after we made our market adjustments and such, and we readjusted our land pricing in this particular township, we ended up at about 85. It was still within the range. It's slightly lower than, than this. But it fell within, you know, the, the target of our overall assessment of countywide. And then we fast forward and these are some of Sioux Falls areas. And like I said, you know, if you looked at that township, at the end of our assessment year, we were in the 70s all day long on all of our sales. It didn't matter where we were at. It was, you know, it was, it was tea, it was Sioux Falls, it was our townships. It was everywhere. We were ending up at about 70%. So that's why we had to make our, our adjustments. And we ended up, you know, pretty tight in some of these areas between 85 and 90%. So at the end of the day, at the end of all of our adjustments that we made countywide, whether it be land or market or our cost manual, an overall level of assessment that Lincoln County had was 90%. And Jim, I did check with our surrounding counties, Minnehaha, Turner, Union, Clay. And I wanted to get their level of assessment because I knew that question was going to be brought up today or maybe during my April meeting with you folks. Two of the other counties, and I, I, I don't remember which ones they were, ended up at 89% level of assessment. But most counties ended up at 85. Just because of the, I mean, I don't know if they didn't feel comfortable raising more than, more, yeah, just the minimum. I, I don't know. I mean, every assessor is a different assessor. I mean, we have the, we, we now have the experience in our office and we have the technology and we have, Ethan? He can really dig in and find where we need to adjust.
Can we go back one slide, please?
Well, I don't want to take all the credit. I mean, we've got a whole staff of appraisers who have, most have been with us for three to four years at this point and that goes a long ways.
Your humility is noted.
Thank you, Ethan.
They're the ones on the grounds running. They're getting the data collected. They're doing the pictures. They're giving us all the information we need to do the statistical part of our job.
Well, and I think that's why it shows where you're tracking because of your staff's effort. You're tracking much more closely to the market value because that takes human effort in the office to make that happen.
It, it takes human effort and the other thing that really wasn't discussed when we were talking about the before and after of the reappraisal areas is that we're using, we're implementing a new software system. So instead of writing in a paper card, paper property card like we have in the past and taking the cost of a deck from a book and figuring out how big the deck is and then taking that times the, the cost per square foot and doing all those calculations that take lots of time, we simply push a few buttons in, say, this is a deck, it's a flat deck and it's this big and then we have our value. And then Carla and I can sit and look at the market and make market adjustments that will affect the whole group of properties or decks, whatever it might be. And, and we can make those changes quite efficiently at this point. So that's also into play now.
And Board, I apologize if I get into a little in, more in-depth, but there's, when I'm looking at the first seven on this gra, on this chart, things just don't make sense to me yet. And so are these good sale numbers in, on those seven?
Yeah, I thought the same thing. When I see the 38%, I would, I would venture to bet that that property has a house or a building permit on it and that was overlooked. That probably should be taken out.
So what, I still, so let's, I'm going to compare, let's say, Card 130 and, you know, 3,084. 130 was 100 and almost 31% ratio. Even under the new adjustment, it's still 153. I'm not quite seeing the connection. To me, it should have went down in comparison, but maybe I'm wrong. I'm trying to understand that. And then again, on the other one, excuse me, it was substantially lower and it's still lower to the ratio.
Yep.
And these, that was done after the parcel was evaluated.
Right.
So I'm still seeing a discord of that process.
Yep. So if I had to take another guess, I would say that was probably a couple of land sales just based on the value of those sales and the, the change that you saw there just going up. You can see here, these are the land sales from the last year and these are our current values on them. There's, uh, let's see, the very first sale, we're over by, you know, $10,000 on it or $5,000. It's really close, whatever it is. We're under on the second one. We're slightly over on this, on the third one there. We're under a good portion on the fourth one and so on. But you can see that if, if they're all based on this exact same land valuation system, they're all going to change in the exact same fashion.
The change doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Right.
So there's in-depth, there has to be more reasons.
Right, but, but one sale or two sales doesn't make the market. That's why we're using all of these sales to make that determination for land values for everybody that way. You know, if I make a deal with some guy I know and we record the sale as a good sale, that sale doesn't make the market and it doesn't set my assessment for the next 20 years.
No, but it was still, in our existing assessment, it was still substantially over and then it's still even more over.
So I would say that person got a good deal based on the other sales in the surrounding area, which again, if they were to appeal, we would have to find some comparable sales. And I'd be pretty confident we could find sales that would support our current valuation.
Based on the medium.
Trying to take the mic from him, but again, Ethan is exactly right. We're taking the bucket full of sales and we're doing the analysis. There's going to be sales where we're over, there's sales that we're under on. And that's why we have the appeal process. If they don't like that value, they can appeal it and they can bring the story to you and tell you why they got, you know, why it's sold for the X amount. And that's why we have the appeal process.
My expectations, my expectations would have, after the adjustment, the one that was substantially higher than the average would have came down.
That would be what we call chasing sales. It's a very discouraged practice in assessing where you just look at sales and only adjust the sales and not everybody else's assessments.
No, I'm, I'm looking, not looking at sales, I'm looking in comparison to what the assessments were. Our assessment average was very low, but that individual property was very, very high.
Yeah.
And it's even higher now after, compared to the average. I wouldn't have thought that would have happened. So.
Based on the medium again, correct?
Yes, and it's also based on they, they purchased the property and they made improvements afterwards.
That was going to be my, in that time.
They made improvements after the fact, so that's why that ratio grew.
Okay.
And it looks, what I call wonky.
So not everything stayed constant on all those properties.
That was our reappraisal area. We went door-to-door, to door-to-door. So some of those sales didn't include the improvements that took place when we were there.
And I mean, I'm, we're all about transparency in our office. You want to come see any property record card, we'll show it to you and we'll walk you through it. This is not a perfect system, you know?
No.
Especially, you know, even for this land valuation that I'm getting credit for. It's not perfect. It's not going to work on every property. You know, we always hear the egg zone, the zoning question is always a big thing. And then building eligibility is, accessibility is another thing. The building eligibility and accessibility, we do have a standard procedure as far as adjusting those, as long as that gets verified through the Planning and Zoning Office. But the, the last thing that I want to touch on that we don't have a perfect process or adjustment for would be properties that are impacted by flooding. We have a great GIS team that, that gives us the best maps. But even still, there is, you know, through our studies, we aren't able to tack down and nail down an exact adjustment for people who are in the floodplain. Some are completely in the floodplain, some are in just a risk area. Some are, you know, just a little bit in the corner of their, of their lot. And so you, you see and hear the whole gamut. And at this point, that's, that's something that's, I would love to figure out.
Not much longer, but how do you handle a property? We're running into situations now where a parcel gets subdivided based on a municipality's platting jurisdiction, which does not have an eligibility. How are you valuing that property? Because it won't meet ag status, but it's not a buildable lot in our requirements?
I'm not sure.
I, I would, I would question your, your statement saying that it's not eligible for ag classification because I see most developers have their property that, the majority of the property that doesn't get passed, stays as ag classification.
I'm thinking of one that does not have ag classification. I don't know how we got assessed, but how, how do you look at that? If they, because we're basing that 62, that there's an eligibility, correct?
So the first two acres at 65,000 and that, that is to try to consider the, the buildability of that property. But, but when we're looking at, let's say this is 20 acres, that tiered system is implementing the, the data or the sales data showing 20 acre sales. It's, when we came up with those tiers, we're, we're using sales of all sizes. So at five acres, they're lining up with five acre sales. At 10 acres, they're lining up with 10 acre sales. At 20 acres, it's 20 acre sales. So it should consider, you know, the fact that it's a 20 acre lot with one building eligibility, unless you're telling me that there is zero building eligibility on this property. In that case, that property owner needs to get in contact with us and we'll go over to the Planning and Zoning Office and verify that and make an adjustment accordingly.
And we, I can think of one specific parcel like that that was recently in front of us. And I'm concerned that we could have this becoming more of a trend, given the municipality has that jurisdiction for platting around them. And it's outside of our ability to maintain that, having a building eligibility to have that parcel. So just, I can think of one. That doesn't mean that's the only one and it surely doesn't mean we won't have more in the future, so.
Zoning Office, I visited with Toby last week and they're really going to try to compile some information for our office on eligibility. There's really not a good data set for what has a ability, eligibility and what doesn't because sometimes they're transferred.
And there is no, you, you bring up a good point. There is no master directory of building eligibility. Some of the building eligibility's are, so I've been told, contained in either sales contracts. That would be one place they're recorded, but not every sales contract is recorded per se. And so that would be a pretty extent, I mean, that would be a pretty, pretty extensive project to put together a master directory of building eligibility's.
Yeah, we inundated the Planning and Zoning Office this year trying to figure out if there is an eligibility. And just because there's not a building eligibility does not make a, not buildable. I mean, they can build something on that, just not a residence. It's worth something.
Speaking of building eligibility, I did not speak of it during the custom, Commissioner report, but the Planning and Zoning Commission on their own is looking at building eligibility's and want to review how they get moved. What criteria should be considered to be moved? I believe they're, they're hoping to have a public input session next month concerning that actually. So for their, for their benefit.
So going back to the information that, well, not going back, going to the information that we provide to the commission, it's very similar to what we gave you last year. We give you the subject property in that requested value and reason is verbatim, even the spelling errors, which bother us. We put the appellant's reason, why they're appealing and what their requested value is. That's straight off the PT-17 form. We give you an assessment history on the property and what the valuation changes, what has taken place in the last four to five years and what the reason for the increase. And then we give you our recommendation. We give you a sketch of the property. Sometimes what the front of the house looks like is different on the backside. So that's why we give you the sketch, the three comparable sales. Now, these, again, all of our sales goes into one bucket, but these are the most three, these are the three that we feel is the most comparable to the subject property. It at least gives you a range of what the potential is on the market for the subject property. We give you the same information as the subject, you know, year built, size, bedroom, bathroom, if available. We pick the most comparable. This is our opinion. We pick the most comparable to the subject property. And then like Ethan said, we look at the three approaches to value. You know, your cost per square foot and the market, what the market indicates. So our cost is based on our assessed value and the market is from the selling price minus the land. So we're taking the land valuation off the selling price of the property to come up with a price per square foot just for the structure. Because land fluctuates size, you know, the size of the land. So that could really skew our numbers when we're looking at that price per square foot, if we looked at an overall. Three approaches to value, we show you on map, subjects indicated in, in pink and our comps are in blue, shows you where they're located and then you make a decision. Like I said, this year, I, I think when we get to County Board, we'll try to give some more information in regards to condition factors possibly if, if it's known. We just, within the last year, started adding all of our building permits. Even though we don't value homes differently based on new roofs, we're at least putting that information into our system, new roofs, new siding, new doors. putting that information into our system, new roofs, new siding, new doors. Now that can, all of those things that happen could, essentially change the condition of the home. Just because you put a new roof on, we don't change the value of it. It's just, it's a maintenance thing. As long as the home is not leaky or causing some type of internal or external damage, that's when we start conditioning the property. So that's the information that we'll be providing for you. I mean, this is your opportunity right now. Do you want more? Do you want less?
I think the system you've created here has been fairly helpful for the past few years. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Um, so as far as the process, you are estimating right now about how many hours of hearing times that we need to have and how long are, how, are we doing fifteen minutes or ten minutes a hearing?
Traditionally, we have done ten minute segments. Um, I get up and give you a brief preview of the property, um, that's being appealed. And then we give the appelle- appellant, uh, time to bring their information to you. If they supply us information prior to the hearing, it will be in your civic clerk. Uh, we will be doing civic clerk again. Um, you can see all the docs all in one, one shot. You know, you're very familiar with the civic clerk system, so.
And I think we stayed fairly well on track last year if memory serves me with a couple hiccups where we scheduled an extra day. So hopefully that situation doesn't present itself again, or that we have a heads up that we need a lot more time. And you know, I know you know what property I'm talking about and I don't anticipate that's going to be an issue this year.
When I had estimated the twenty-five hours, um, of appeal time, that was based on my projection of two hundred and twenty-five appeals. We went to three fifty.
Right, so how does that, what are you, what are you thinking that we need for hours of, um, of commission time to hear? I'm have, um, Sherry's made copies of what she has for a schedule right now. So I've got, and I'm, and I, this is what she has and maybe it's wrong. I'm not sure. Well, as far as what people have volunteered for, we want to check. We're doing this the week of April eighteenth through the twenty-second. I think, uh, Commissioner Poppins filled in eight spots of availability. Commissioner Aaron's has filled in two. Um, I filled in seven. Commissioner Schmidt has filled in nine and Commissioner Gibbon has filled in three. So if you guys can look at your schedules and find some spots where other people have filled in, so that we can get a quorum for the extra hours that we're gonna need to hear these, that would be great. And Sherry, when you need, when you guys need to have this by?
Madam Chair, I, I signed up right with the intention of hopefully being able to get removed. I see one time on here, the nine to twelve on Tuesday morning. Um, there's full coverage on that. I'm going to request.
Just hold on. Yep.
I was gonna finish. Um, Tiffany is moving from nine to twelve, but we'll still have a quorum if you want to remove from there.
Yep, if we, I'm looking for spots where we have quorum, so.
I have to come off of that April nineteenth, that from nine to twelve.
Is everyone else still work for that date?
What date are you talking about?
The Tuesday, the nineteenth from nine to twelve.
I volunteered, I know, to, uh, Sherry to move to Friday evening, the nineteenth, if that would help out to make sure we have a quorum.
That won't help out now.
Pardon?
That won't, so if I move Tiffany to six to nine, then we've got a quorum from nine to nine that day, if everything stays the same.
And I'll stay on at night. I'm just looking to come off some.
Yep, you don't have to, you don't have to stay on that one, cause I'd have a quorum in the morning. I have a quorum in the afternoon and a night. And Tiffany and Mike would come off the morning and Tiffany would move to Tuesday night. So then Tuesday is set. We have a quorum through the whole day.
Well, and Sherry, thank you for putting this together. It's taken me a couple weeks to move. The only reason I signed up for two of these is because I had to move some things around that were previously scheduled. I've been able to do that now.
Good.
So I'm gonna be signing up for some more slots, but I had to firm my schedule up before I could commit to anything.
Nope, absolutely.
So I've got that and I'll give that to you after this meeting.
Carla.
When's the, when are we doing consolidated?
Um, well, I have a problem there and that's also something else I want to talk to you about.
Can I ask a question before, uh, so just for clarity though, if we're gonna make an adjustment and we only have three of the, of five, we have to have a unanimous decision.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Yeah, so just for everyone's understanding, i- if we're going to make an adjustment.
Otherwise, you're gonna be moving them.
Yeah, so.
Teamwork.
Yeah.
So what's on the consolidated, Sherry?
Okay, so in nineteen ninety-six, the Lincoln County Commission set up the consolidated board with the city of Canton. Um, I think in nineteen ninety-six, it was okay for us to do that. I think at this time, and I'll put it on the next agenda if you want me to, um, that we dissolve the consolidated board next year and Canton will be on their own.
For twenty-three.
For twenty-three, yeah.
Well, they need to move up there.
But we still need to do.
We still need to get a consolidated board. Now, I have talked to, the school's having a problem, um, getting somebody here because, they work during the day, so I'm wondering if we shouldn't do, try to do a consolidated board, then it, either Tuesday or Wednesday night. And that's unfortunate because that takes, you know, we do a lot of the other ones there, but we do have those two nights to be able to do a consolidated board.
Either, you said Tuesday or Wednesday?
I would think so, yeah.
Well, and we have a quorum that's gonna be here, but it's gonna.
Well, we, with the consolidated, yeah, with consolidated board, we have to have the three commissioners, city and school board.
So you want to check on that?
Well, they don't, they'll, the school will be available for nights, cause their people work days and they can't get away. And the city said that he's very flexible, so I'm assuming if we do it at night, they'll be really flexible.
Is the city's meeting on that Tuesday night, on the nineteenth? I mean, are they, maybe we're restricted to Wednesday?
If I may ask the question, why are we dissolving consolidated? Just, just general.
But why do we do it? I mean, in nineteen ninety-seven, when there was only a large amount of people in the county, it may have been a good idea. But now we've got larger board. Why not let them take care of their local?
So if we're gonna move that, we've got that one to five slot on Monday. I don't know if there's, we just need to look at, I just need everybody to look at their schedule and get these back to Sherry.
Oh, we were back to how many hours are we looking at needing?
It's gonna, it's probably thirty-four.
He did a rough estimate on the increase that we received on the appeals on the last day and he was thinking about thirty-six hours. I don't know. I mean, it's really hard to gauge because I don't know what the local boards did, you know, it's, it's dependent on them. If they went with some of our recommendations, we may not need that many hours. But if they overlooked a lot of our recommendations, then I'm appealing back three hundred and forty appeals.
I mean, and for me, I mean, one of my problems is that I have a law office to run and bills to pay and employees to pay and it's, it's kind of a financial hardship for me to be out of the office for a week straight. I have other availability on my calendar, if need be. Well, I would like to get it all done this week if we can, because if it's going into two weeks.
I mean, based on this, there's what, forty-seven hours?
I mean, Commissioner Aaron's probably has the same problem I have.
Well, I, I, I'm actually okay. I can make all these things work just fine within my schedule. It's just a matter of, coordinating, calling, you know, making sure I'm good with everybody else. So I have no problems. I've filled myself in here on, three, four more spots now. Um, for example, I can do six to nine on April twenty-first. Um, I know nobody's signed up for it.
April twenty-first?
Yeah, April twenty-first, Thursday.
Okay.
I have a problem on the twenty-first. I do. At six to nine, I really do.
So Schmidt's off there.
I could help out Thursday and Friday morning. On the twenty-first and twenty-second.
Yeah, so Thursday morning, I'm available as well.
Okay, so on Friday, we were gonna leave for overflow, but that might not be an option.
Joel, you're on Thursday morning? Yeah, I could help Thursday morning.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Joel and.
So I've got Joel on Thursday morning with Schmidt and I've got myself and Gibbon on Friday morning. Um, Commissioner Gibbon, did you say you could help on Thursday morning as well?
Thursday and Friday morning, you're correct.
Okay, awesome.
How about one to five?
Now, now if anybody wants to do Friday night, I am, I am available.
You know, what, what I, what I'd like to do is be over-prepared for the schedule and hope that we don't need it. Rather than being like, oh, we have three hundred and forty and nobody to do it, so.
Well, and one of my other, I guess, questions, I know when you and I had talked about it, Sherry, was, if we bring lunch in, if we just do a half hour lunch and extend the time one way or the other over the lunch hour?
Now, Sherry, I'm also available to form a quorum from six to nine on Tuesday evening as well.
Six to nine, Tuesday evening. And we have, you know, the more the merrier. I'm signing up for that one. So I've got Mike.
Oh, goodie, I can get all, come off.
No, you're not.
Didn't you just say that if we have a problem, we have to have four people here or we have an odd number?
Well, no, you don't, you, the, the point being is we're gonna make a change. It has to be on a three-member board. It will have to be unanimous.
Yeah.
So, otherwise, we're gonna have them all coming back when we have four, five of us to try to get it adjusted.
Commissioner Aaron's, can you do that Tuesday night then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm available Tuesday.
What about Monday from one to five? I see.
Okay, how about if I do this? If I, if I just call up the name, cause you guys are throwing way too many dates and everything out there.
Here.
Let's do Monday, the eighteenth.
Start at the beginning.
We're short one person on one to five, right?
Yep, one to five, we're short one person.
Well, I, I guess I can chip in.
Okay, so then we are covered on Tuesday morning. We are, we've got three on Tuesday afternoon and we've got enough on Tuesday night. So Wednesday morning, nine to twelve.
So do you have me down for, for Monday afternoon then?
Yeah, you and Mike and I are in the afternoon.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Monday afternoon as well. Okay.
Yep.
So we're looking at Wednesday right now.
Wednesday, we're short one time.
Wednesday, I've got Tiffany and Mike on the morning.
If nobody else, then we'll sign off on that one.
I could, I could, if I could rearrange, I could make the morning work and not the evening.
Well, we need you one place or the other, so it's probably not gonna make much difference unless somebody else can fill in.
You want to do the morning, cause that's easier.
I'm just waiting to hear back on whether it'll be today or tomorrow, on whether I can do Wednesday, one to five.
So let's just eliminate Wednesday morning.
Okay. Unless you said you had something you had to get out of it. No, that was on the twenty-first. Okay, so then Wednesday morning's gone. I've got Wednesday afternoon and Wednesday evening, I got three. So if you can fill, if you can come in, get, we'll get you on the schedule, but we're covered. So Thursday, I've got a quorum on the morning, Jim Schmidt, Joel Aaron's and Jim Gibbon. Um, I'm short at the afternoon. I've got Tiffany and Jim Schmidt. And I'm short at night. I've got Jim Gibbon and Aaron's.
How, I mean, we're spending a lot of hours here. We anticipate that this is gonna take this long?
Possibility, yeah.
You know, to be honest, I think we'll have some more definite answers by next Tuesday evening. I know Sherry wants the agenda set. I, I understand. I mean, it's a lot of work to get it prepared on, on John's civic clerk.
It's easier for us than it is for you. You're the one, we, cause if we don't prepare it, you can't dump the stuff into it, so.
I don't want you guys to feel like, I think it's one week, it worked really well last year. We don't have definite numbers. You know, if we can do three days one week and two days the next week, I mean.
Well, we're at twenty-four hours so far covered. My preference is to hammer it out and be done with it. That's my preference.
Well, I think then it keeps it fresh in your mind what you've been doing, so it's.
Consistency from one to the other, yeah.
So is there anybody else that can sign up for Wednesday morning?
Well, Wednesday morning is off.
We're just taking it off completely?
We went there, no one.
Yep, so I just need Thursday afternoon and Thursday evening.
I'll take, um, Thursday afternoon and evening.
All right, then do we, give me one more person for Friday morning and then?
Right now, Friday morning is myself and Commissioner Gibbon.
Yep.
What if we're not scheduled and we still show up and come?
Fine. As long, I need to know that I've got three people, you can still show up.
You know, I, I'm calving them until April. If there's nothing going on, I'll, I'll come, okay? But, you know, I don't always know.
What? You can't arrange that?
You don't have them timed out?
So nobody else can on Friday?
Well, we're at thirty-one hours. We're about one day short, so.
So we're taking Friday off?
Friday's done.
So we're not doing Friday?
Nope.
Apparently not.
Ten minutes? Is that what you want to do, ten minutes?
Yeah, that's what we want to do is.
Ten minutes and so.
We want to try to get it to a strict ten-minute policy. Um, so we would like to use the timer?
Yeah, what I'm, and, and I don't, cause we didn't have a timer, so I wasn't paying attention last year to, what was taking the amount of time it was, but.
Tuesday, the twenty.
You can. That's what I, if you compare yours to, let's say two, let us, you think a minute, so boom, cause we're all gonna have it ahead of time. Um, give the applicant or the, the appellant, five minutes. They're on the clock. Commissioners can ask questions the remaining four minutes and we can vote.
Yeah, so I think if we put a.
I mean, does that, does that make sense timing wise? If not, tell me.
No, I think if, well, Sioux Falls gives you five minutes from the start of your appeal to the end. That's it.
I think where we ran into problems last year, people called in and they were late calling in, correct?
Right, well, that's some of it, yeah. But I think that if we put the timer on from the time that Carla says, or however we're going to introduce the parcel or whatever, we start that timer. When that red light goes off, we're done with that. Cause you have to make a decision. So by the yellow light, you should definitely have a decision.
Well, and I, I understand the ten-minute timer. I mean, I can look at the regular clock too. I want, I want every appellant to have enough time to present their case. And I think, five minutes should be enough time.
The, the thing with the appellants is a lot of times they stray away and start talking about feelings instead of facts. So if you guys can help keep them on the railroad tracks of facts too.
I'm not gonna direct that. It's, they're gonna, they're gonna have to, they should know they're gonna have five minutes and use it wisely.
Yeah, so I think when we send out the notices, if we put in there, you're allotted five minutes to plead your case, basically. We'll have a ten-minute spot for that case. They have five minutes to speak on it. Five minutes is a long time where, like, when you're thinking about.
It is, I agree, but that'll give them a fair opportunity. And then the commis- commissioners, ask enough questions and then we're gonna have to take it to a vote, I mean.
And just for clarification, the twenty-sixth morning of would be off, cause we have a commissioner meeting that day.
Yeah, we haven't got into that week, but we can, yep.
Why don't we hold off on that week until we, do we need to make a decision on the following week?
No, I just.
We're gonna have to do it on Tuesday or Wednesday night. We're going to have to do it on Tuesday or Wednesday night, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday night. I'd say we do it on Wednesday night, because we've got three commissioners here, where the rest of them, well.
That's church night too.
Do we have sports night?
Yeah, that's a church night.
I know.
The only thing is, is that if it's consolidated on a Wednesday night, you don't have your Canton representative on Wednesday night representing Canton, so, just saying.
Good Friday, yeah, we're done.
He's not on your list.
Easter Monday.
I don't, I haven't put anybody on there yet, so I don't know what we're consolidating for. They can't.
All right. All right, I think we got a, a working draft of our schedule. Um, if we email that out to everybody and then we can double-check it with our calendars at our offices and whatnot. And make sure that we can do that, so you can get people scheduled.
Do we think we should do it Wednesday or Thursday, because I'll contact the school and the city and make sure that they've got availability?
Yeah, that's, um, that's fine. We are going to start, we're going to start on April twelves with our agreed upon, what we talked about, right?
Yeah, while the house cleaning will be done beforehand.
All right.
Oh, she's taking the podium.
Don't worry.
Currently, we have our assessments going out with the percentage.
Done everything. This is a concern. I mean, it's been brought to us by citizens, attorneys, and here is an example of the reason why I do not think that we should have every single parcel have a percentage. Because the law says we only have to do it if it's over twenty percent of a reappraisal criteria. Not an improvement, not a change in use, not a change in classification. That's what the law says and that's how our programming is set up, based on this law. So when we send out our assessment notices and we're providing a percentage, um, difference on last year's value and this year's value, it's very distorted. And it's because the program was written for this law. This is an example. This value in twenty twenty-one was eighty-eight thousand nine oh six. Twenty twenty-two is four hundred, two hundred and forty-six thousand six eighty-two. Our program thinks it's a forty-five percent decrease. No. No. And this is how the formula works. Last year it was egg, egg land and it was valued at eighty-eight thousand nine oh eight. This year, it didn't qualify for egg land, so the assessment went out at two hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-two, just like this says. We have to account for the change in use and the growth. The growth on this particular parcel, because of the use change, and that is a criteria for growth, is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand four fifty-four. So the program recognizes, well, the valuation difference is only forty-eight thousand two oh eight. And so that's why it's saying it's a forty-five percent decrease.
And while we're on this subject, uh, for properties that go from egg to non-egg this year and that growth gets added to that budget for that, that taxing jurisdiction. And next year, they come in with all their documentation and qualify, there's artificial inflation to that budget and everybody else is going to pick up the difference when that property goes back to egg classification and has a value way under market.
So Carla, what do you want to do?
I would like to follow the law and only put the percentage differences on those parcels on our assessment notice for reappraisal only. I mean, this is concerning.
Yeah, I agree, because it's giving the wrong impression, it's confusing, we're going to spend all of our time explaining.
Yes.
That math.
We knew there, Jake and I, uh, saw that there was an issue last year and it was on our discretionary, the same type of formula was going into effect program-wise, but we did not see this until this year. It was on our, on our, um, improvements, classification changes, um.
Can you fix the computer program?
I.
So the tail doesn't wag the dog here.
That's, I, I honestly.
It has to account for those other things by law, though. It has to make those corrections, so.
Why don't we, why don't we not?
Yep.
Do it on these, but I, I agree with Commissioner Aaron's, I think we need to see if there is a program that maybe fixes that problem, that works.
I needed to bring it to you because this could be some of the issues that we hear at equalization time. I mean, these numbers were not accurate, they were not.
That is an accurate depiction, though, according to law, of the change in their value. So I don't know what you would do to the program to change it, I mean, you have to.
Well, I don't know either, because I'm, that's not my wheelhouse. But, and we can talk about that more, but if it's giving distorted numbers right now, then I think that we need to take it off and just strictly comply with the statute.
I agree. And we'll, I'll visit with Jake, he's aware of it, we, you know, we're going into a new programming era, you know, in the next one to two years. I mean, we'll, we'll visit with the programmers and see if there is a fix, I don't know, I don't know if there is.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thanks for all your time.
Thanks, everybody. I consider a motion to adjourn.
I'll still move, ma'am, sure.
Thank you, thank you, Sean, we call her off.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
So are we doing something on the twelve?